Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Peter.
Going over the agenda for tonight, item number two is the Act 537 Plan Sewer Facilities Plan Update. We have Joe Nolan here from CKS Engineer. Joe has been with us a fair amount. I've been here seven years. Joe's been here, so I don't know how long Joe has been doing this for the township, but it's probably a long tenure. Basically, LST has developed an infiltration and inflow abatement program that processes or established processes for the identification and removal of I and I in the sewage collection system. So Joe will talk a little bit more on those issues and why we had that before us tonight. Joe?
Thanks a lot, and thank you for having me. We prepared a Act 537 Plan on behalf of Lower Southampton Township. Act 537 Plan is the plan required by this state by Act 537. It help address existing sanitary sewer issues and problems in your system and also to really develop proper planning for permitting and designing sewage facilities. Now, to give you some background, your township, Lower Southampton Township, has two sanitary sewer areas. You have the Proquesting Interceptor and then the Nishamani Interceptor. The focus of this plan is the Nishamani Interceptor. You, by connecting to the Nishamani Interceptor, you are a client, basically, of the Bucks County Water and Sew Authority who owns that interceptor. Way back in 2012, the DEP told Bucks County Water and Sew Authority, you need to do something about infiltration and inflow because there's your annual reports that are showing that your hydraulically overload. There was a two-year battle, and there was a settlement agreement reached in 2014 where Bucks agreed to enter into an agreement to help mitigate the excessive wet weather flows that were in this system. Back in 2014, we actually, CKF, I was working for the township at the time, actually prepared a plan of study because we had to be a part of that. There's 16 municipalities that connected in the Nishamani Interceptor and our clients of Bucks County. We're one of 16. So you can tell it's a very complex situation because they needed to have agreements with all 16. All 16 needed to do a sewage facilities plan. That's why it's taken six years to get to this point. Bottom line, as Joe clearly stated, the biggest problem is not in dry weather, but in wet weather. Bucks County did a lot of planning, a lot of evaluation. They did an alternative analysis, and that analysis ended up recommending that they address the problems with the interceptor. They're going to line a great portion of it with a sewer liner to help mitigate inflow, and they're going to replace a major section of it. That's an 18, over $18 million project that they're undertaking to help mitigate flows in that interceptor. But each municipality had to do their own part to help control what we're discharging into that interceptor, and one of the things we needed to do was develop an infiltration inflow abatement program. I don't know how many of you were here in 2016, but you actually approved the same plan in 2016, but DEP did not accept the infiltration inflow plan that was submitted at that time. They wanted us to basically look at more alternatives. We did that. One of the alternatives, which I ran by Joe, was to initiate a lateral inspection program on house resales. DEP was really pushing that. We decided to defer that at this point, but we had to make a commitment to do infiltration inflow work in the Nishamani basin. Our problem is we have two basins, and really, the Proquesting Basin is the larger basin. And I know from being here for so long that your forces do a lot of work during the year, but now we have to start actually proving that we're removing a certain amount of flow, and there's goals in this plan that we have to meet. And the reason we need to approve this plan and move forward is because right now, we're pretty much on a ban for sewer connections that anywhere in the Nishamani Basin. We borrowed some from 2015, and DEP has sort of been letting this thing slide, but now we're at the point where we need to move forward and approve a plan, and that will allow us to start initiating this program, and it will also free up sewer connections for additional development within the Nishamani area. That's in it in a nutshell. I believe you probably have a copy of the plan. There's a lot of detail. There's a lot of work that went into it, as you can imagine. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but really, this is something we need to do at this point to move this forward and to open up the potential for more sewer connections in the Nishamani area. I believe this has been advertised, right, Joe?
Yes.
So we did the public advertising. Did you get any comments at all?
No comments.
Okay, so we received no comments. We went through the mandatory public advertising period. The only thing that remains is for the board to adopt the plan and for us to submit it to DEP. Now, one thing I did before we advertised, we sent the plan to DEP and said, "Look, look at this and tell us if this is okay. If we approve this, you're going to approve. If we've sent this to you, you will approve it." And they said, "Yes, this plan that you now have before us is acceptable." So that's where we are at this point. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Now, Joe, the Nishamani Interceptor, that's one-third of the township's sanitary sewer, right? The book represents the bigger two-thirds.
It's the smaller of the two. It's in the northeast corner of the township, and the interceptor actually runs along the creek the whole way. Copy of, if there's plans in maps and plans in the document which shows where the interceptor is and where the problems are.
Now, Joe, if we, let's say it this way, now that we have the full complement of the board here in front of us, and you're physically here, can you tell us what townships that you recall in Bucks County that actually do have that ordinance that would basically allow for the inspection and repair of sewer laterals in conjunction with the sale of a property?
Probably about half.
Okay, so is that seem to be where everybody's kind of going towards? Is that what you're seeing?
Yes, because a lot of the problems we found over the years are in the private building sewer rather than in the public sewer. We're doing everything we can. I mean, your guys have been, every year, televising thousands and thousands of feet of line, and we're repairing those leaks, but you know, you got to remember, every house, every building, every property has a separate building sewer, and that's something that we haven't gotten involved in yet. I'll be honest with you, it's a difficult thing to grasp. It causes a lot of angst with the people that own properties and are selling properties. It's another step in, you know, selling and buying a house is difficult enough, but when you have another step that you have to go through to hire a plumber, to televise the line, to send that tape to the township to review if there's problems, you got to fix the problems. I mean, that all takes time, and you know, a lot of times, closing are quick today. But other municipalities that I'm involved in that have it have sort of made it work, and as long as everybody is educated on it, the real estate agents are key because they're the ones that have to get this done, and you know, it's got to be done early. Some real estate agents, when you put your house on the market, they say right away, "Get your line televised, get this out there so we know what we're dealing with," so we don't have to wait till, you know, we got a buyer and we're going to closing, and then there's a $10,000 problem we got to fix.
Yeah, so for the most part, it kind of impacts more the seller, but if you're the new purchaser buying it, you know you're getting a decent, you got a decent sewer line at least. So it gives you at least a little bit of peace of mind.
Yes, and what it does really, it helps the township in that we're picking up bad lines or, you know, old lines that have been crushed. A lot of the old lines are old cast iron that rot over the years, so it's helpful. It helps the buyer of the house, and it also helps the township. So it's something, you know, it's hard to go down that path, but a lot of municipalities are now doing it.
Joe, I have a question for you. This is Ray Worldy. You mentioned a cost of about $18 million to line these sewer systems to cut down on the infiltration. Is that a shared cost amongst all of the municipalities that participate in this plan?
Yes. What they're going to do is you're not going to have to pay a dollar value upfront. They're going to incorporate it into the rate structure.
And that's what they've been doing. Yep.
Yeah, and that's what they're going to do. And they're in the process of getting ready to start that work, so you know, that will be done. That's one of the things that they have a firm schedule to commit to do that.
And this rate structure then affects only those people in that northeast portion that are affected by the Nishamani Interceptor or the whole township?
No, just the Nishamani Interceptor, because you're in the Nishamani Interceptor, you're being serviced by Bucks County Water and Sew Authority, who eventually goes to the city of Philadelphia. So you have intermediary there which is transporting your sewage, so you're paying your bills to Bucks County Water and Sew Authority. Okay, in the Proquesting, we deal directly with the city of Philadelphia, and that's how I got involved into township initially when the agreement came to place, and they asked me if I would help them with the negotiations on the agreement with the city of Philadelphia. So the Proquesting is the larger section, but the Nishamani is the one where there's the interceptor, which, I mean, sections of the interceptor are 82 inches diameter. It's a huge, huge sewer pipe. The smallest section is 30 inches. It goes 30, 33, 42, 48, 54. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger as people connect to it, and then at the end of that is Totem Road Pumping Station. That's the big facility that was being hydraulically overloaded that had to be fixed up too. So, you know, this happened over years. As I said, it just, 2012 was when DEP finally said, "We need to do something here," and that's initiated this 537 plan.
Okay.
Good, Frank.
Good.
What, they have to approve the plan, but as a result of this, what specifically does Lower Southampton Township have to do? Consider whether adopt that ordinance and what else?
Well, right now, one of the big sticking points going back and forth was adoption of that ordinance, but I think the last time I brought it up to Joe, he provided me with language that I think was acceptable to DEP, which basically said, "You know, we're not ready to do it now, but we'll reconsider it down the road." So the way I look at it is, until they come back and ask you to do it, or maybe, you know, in your chapter 94, they might say, "Hey, what about the ordinance?" So that would be a commitment. The only other commitment is to keep doing I and I work and start showing results.
And doing 10% each year for 10 years.
Yes. You got to inspect 10% of the lines.
Are we on that schedule?
Yeah.
Here's the problem that I explained to DEP, but they didn't really go for it. I said, "Look, we have the Nishamani and we have Proquesting. We can't dedicate 100% of our efforts only in the Nishamani because we, Philadelphia, we have issues too." So they sort of said, "Well, you know, we'll give you 10 years," but you know, I think after this, if it gets adopted, I'll have to sit down with the guys and say, "Okay, let's lay this out, and you know, every year, we got to do this much," and, you know, put a schedule together, and we can, every year, we have to report to DEP in our chapter 94, which is an annual report, and we have to tell them how much work we did every year, and that's what they're going to gain compliance.
The might of the board have to hire outside contractors to help meet the schedule?
Um, you haven't to this point, but we'll have to see how much you need to get done in both this and Proquesting.
Hey, Joe. Hey, John. What does it take for the realtor or the home buyer to get into this program? What is it going to cost them, I guess, to do something like this in a new house or a new development?
Well, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to do it in a new development because everything's new and everything's been inspected. This only has to do with resales, okay? And you also can put in the ordinance, if the house is less than, let's say, 10 years old, you don't have to do it because theoretically, it's all PVC pipe, it's all been inspected. Really, this is going after the very old, the older homes, and this is a lot more popular, and it's been implemented a lot more in like boroughs. Like Dublin Borough has this ordinance where you have a lot of very old homes and, you know, 100-year-old homes, and those pipes over the years have deteriorated. So if you have been putting in PVC pipe for the past 20, 25 years, chances are, you're going to TB it, but you're not going to find a problem. Okay, TBing could be $500. You got it. There's plumbers now are doing this. They're coming and they're TBing the lateral, but if you find a problem, and if certain requirements rule how big the problem is, then you have to commit to fixing the problem.
What do you, what do you have to say?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any idea what the cost might be to the buyer?
It depends what the problem is. If they got to dig up the whole line, it could be thousands of dollars, but you know, we haven't seen many of those situations.
If I were representing here.
A lot of times, they have insurance.
Whoa, go ahead, somebody.
Now, if I, listen, listening to this conversation, if I'm representing a buyer at this point in any of the older communities, I'm going to recommend that they make that part of their inspection process because it's a significant issue if it occurs two weeks after you move in.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, I got kicked off, but I think I'm back now.
That's all right, Joe. So I mean, as far as the ordinance, we may want to do that at a future date and act on that at a, you know, in the upcoming future, but as far as for item two, that should not be a problem for tonight for that.
No, it's, passing that ordinance is not in this plan. Adopting this plan, you're not committing to doing that order.
Go. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I have a best question. I have a best question. The northeast corner of the township, does that include the Oakford section? Do you know if that includes the Oakford section?
I don't know that well off the top of my head. Do you have a copy of the plan? There's a map in the back that shows the section that's included in the Nishamani Interceptor. I can get you that information. I just don't have.
I think, I shot over an email, I believe it was either yesterday or the day before, with the map. I believe it does outline where they're doing the piping that.
It does. It does. I think it does include Oakford, back down, back off of Oakford Avenue and Riverview Lane and so forth.
I saw the map, but I wasn't sure if Oakford was involved, but okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Joe. And then, just in case, if you get a hold, stick around for a little while longer once we go to the official meeting at 7:30, just in case if there's any other additional questions other than that. Thank you for your service, Joe.
Not a problem. I'll hang around. I'm here.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Should I just stay on?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Matt, did you want to go? We got about 10 minutes, Matt, so you got about five.
All right, I'll make it quick. Good evening. So first, I would like to start off with, and I don't know how you want to do it. I know, Mr. Chair, you're always very good about discussing what we discussed at workshop. I don't know if you'd like me to say it or if you would like to include it. I do want to apologize to all the residents who have attempted to contact our office via email, Facebook, phone call. I was unable to respond to them. I did try to get back to as many as possible, but it was not everyone. So if you'd like me to form an apology, I have no problem doing that, or if you'd like to include it in your report, I just want it noted that no one was intentionally ignored or dismissed.
Is this regarding to summer camps and refunds of money, and when are the camps going to open and so forth?
Yeah, yeah, just more just general inquiries and things like that where I've just been unable to keep up with the phones with just being me. So there's definitely some folks out there who have tried to reach us, and they have not yet received a response. Like I said, I've been grabbing the phone as often as I can, but I've missed calls.
Okay. Well, Matt, in that, if I did summarize that, or are we making an official statement that the camps aren't going to open, or is that official?
I was going to get there. I just wanted to start with that one. Regardless of however the board, you know, advises me to proceed this evening, based on my recommendation, I do want to apologize to all those folks who've been reaching out.
Well, if you're going to make a statement, you might as well handle the whole thing then, right?
No problem.
Okay.
Just a quick update. Love Grows did set up their farm stand this past Sunday. They were there from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They will be there next Sunday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They did great. I stopped by in the morning before they actually got going. They were still setting up. Everything looked really well. Delicious food. They had the eggs available for sale, so if you weren't able to make it by last Sunday, try and stop by this Sunday. Looked like they had a lot of good food out.
So when Matt makes his report, the recommendation is not to open the pools or to have the camps. There'll have to be a motion to accept the recommendation and issue refunds, so.
Okay.
The next is my camp recommendation. I did hear back from all of you based on my recommendation and the regulations. Even once we go to green, which is at a time to be undetermined, it would be extraordinarily difficult to run our camp programs. The children who participate in our programs have not been in school since March 13th, and one of the things that's very fortunate is we take procedures that they do at school such as transitioning from activity to activity to lunch to recess, and how they move about, and we try and apply that into the camp setting. Without these children having learned social distancing, it would be then on the camp counselors to convey what social distancing is and safe practices by social distancing, and quite frankly, camp would end up just being really boring, and it would be camp counselors trying to instruct campers on social distancing. The normal activities that, what we called "normal" wouldn't exist anymore. We would have to create new activities, and it would be extraordinarily difficult to implement social distancing with our camp size, and one of the other factors that we discussed at length with the insurance company was the amount of staff that's children. We typically have three shifts. It would start at 7:45, then there's another crew that comes in at 8:45, and another crew that comes in at 9:15 and stays until 5:15. The amount of contact that those campers and counselors just had over that period of nine hours and 15 minutes increases exponentially with our shifts. So when it comes to a, God forbid, situation, if we had to implement contact tracing, it would be extensive, meaning the potential outbreak of who would have possibly come in contact with that camper or that counselor for that matter would be, it would be detrimental to camps. So every effort that we put forward to try and organize something would then be shut down. We would all be sent home and asked to quarantine for two weeks, and I just don't feel that that's something we can implement safely. Now, down the road, come a little later in July, once we're into the green zone, I do want to try and put together a smaller camp program, shorter hours, would include less staff. It would be more of a recreation program than a childcare. So I don't have the exact details or the dates of when that program would run. I more than likely wouldn't put forth the registration and the organization of that until I was certain of what date we're going to be green.
So Matt, you would have some refunds coming up then going back, so do you want to tell the board then basically the kind of the numbers you're talking about?
I'm definitely getting that. Now, the next being said with the Dolphin Swim Club, excluding the camp program, this would just be for the public. My recommendation is to hang tight for now. I'm still in the works of submitting a plan to Bucks County Department of Health, and it's an all-encompassing plan, everything from signage to sanitization to total number of attendees. There's a bather load calculation. I'm working closely with American Pool and the Department of Health on the feasibility of being able to operate this season. As you're all aware, and those who have been involved in the previous budget cycles, the revenue over expenses is always something that we pay very close attention to at the Dolphin Swim Club and the operation as a whole. Right now, we're starting to look at a shortened season with lower attendance, so I'm going to be able to work some real numbers, but right now, it would more than likely end up with a revenue shortfall over expenses, but it would still be my recommendation to hang tight. I know there's a large demographic of people pushing to get reopened and provide these levels of services. It would also be easier to invite families because the parent or guardian would be responsible for that individual's supervision while at the pool. If they were unable to supervise their children or even their other guests, and that's everything from social distancing to posted signage and guidelines and rules, they would simply be asked to leave, whereas summer camp, we would have to try and instruct that camper on why their behavior was wrong, and it just, that wouldn't work. But in a public pool setting, I think we can make it work. There's just going to be a point in time where it won't be financially viable. So for now, I'd like to hang on, and I will definitely stay in touch, and I'll make sure that I communicate with you guys as we proceed through the process, working with the Department of Health and with American Pool.
So any motion we would make tonight then, Frank and Matt, would be to accept the Park and Recreation Director's recommendation to cancel summer camp for this summer and issue a full refund to those that have paid?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, to the refunds. Right now, we currently have a total of 267 campers registered for the program. We have roughly just a little over $108,000 that would need to be refunded in a total of 114 transactions, some being refunded by check if they paid with check or cash, some being refunded directly to their credit card or debit card if that was their formal payment. That's a lot of refunds. We've never processed that many refunds. I was talking with Joe earlier. Joe, if you want to help me out with the refunds and kind of how to proceed them?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to go through the documentation, have to make sure everything that we're refunding back as supporting documentation goes through our normal approval processes and finance and in recreation. We would probably be bringing back the one recreation clerk for a duration of time to assist on processing the refunds, and we would have a callback provision. The callback provision is that the person would have to respond within three days, but has up until 10 days to get back basically to the Recreation Director. So there may be a two-week gap before the person would even have the ability to start working on the processing feature. So I would say probably week two through five is when the transactions would be going back to the residents. So I just want you to be aware of that part.
Okay. Well, I think people are just looking for an answer. If they, you know, if you're just asking them to be patient, we're working on this high volume of transactions. At least they know their money's coming back.
Yep. Yeah, because that, I mean, that, those amount of transactions actually starts from January all the way to March and April, so it's accumulation of, let's say, four months of transactions that you're going to be giving refunds back in a period of three to four weeks. So, you know, patience would be, patience would be good. So, but that's it. We're at 7:31. I don't know if you wanted to start. Mark had one, you know, one, a few comments real quick, but if you wanted to start, we can proceed if you want.
Well, Mark's usually pretty quick.
Mark?
My name's not, my name's not Matt.
My name's not my name's not Matt.
You have two minutes.
Mute him, Peter.
I'll 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 be brief. Real uh very quickly Supervisor Kaplan, I took a ride through through Old Street Road.
Gab? Did we lose him?
She's there.
I was joking when I said mute him.
I'm here.
I think I think what he wanted to say, if he if he fell off, I'm sorry. Um, I think he wanted to say he did the review about the street that he referred in our late speeding, and he agreed the fact that the the road is pretty beat up. So uh he just wanted to uh acknowledge that fact.
Oh, thank you, Mark. I appreciate that.
So I don't know if he had anything else he wanted to mention, Mark? So if Mark's not on, then maybe um uh Ray, you wanna you wanna start this up?
Uh, sure. We all ready?
Yep.
Okay. I have 7:33 p.m. Uh, welcome to the June 10th, 2020 Lower Southampton Board of Supervisors Virtual Teleconference Meeting. Um, the meeting was advertised duly as required by the Township Manager. And uh to begin the meeting, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session at uh 6:30 p.m. via teleconference. Um, during that executive session, um, the board discussed uh various matters. Um, one of them will be brought up in the manager's report tonight. Um, another manage another matter was a a legal issue that has come up. And another matter was uh involved the appointment of a of an attorney for an upcoming appeal. After the executive session, the board met at approximately 7:00 p.m. Um, in a workshop session, in a workshop, in a workshop session, um, the board heard a presentment from um an engineer from CKS Engineers who is available to speak tonight regarding item number two on tonight's agenda. Um, the Act 537 Plan to Abate Sewage Infiltration Along the Nishamani Interceptor Area and what the plans are to implement that, and also some feedback that we received from the DEP regarding that plan. We also then heard from the Parks and Recreation Director an update on the Love Grows Farm Market that um uh had their initial farm market this past Sunday from 10 to 1 located at Play Wiki Farm. Um, we also heard an update about summer camps and inquiries into the summer camps. Uh, Mr. Mr. Gilbert will be issuing a statement, making a statement regarding a decision on summer camps and um uh refunds of money that were paid to the some by the summer campers um later in this meeting. We also heard a brief update from the Public Works Director regarding some paving that's going to occur as part of the Township's paving program for 2020. Next up on the agenda for tonight would be public comment. Um, the public was uh invited to comment via email. An email address provided. Uh, the board accepts uh comment up to the minute the meeting starts. So so if we could check in and find out through Mr. Gatto if there's any anything to be brought up in public comment tonight?
Yeah, there is. There is one uh email that we received. Okay, um, it says, "My name is Jacke Wee Nicoletti, and I live at 232 Front Street in Feasterville, Tretos. And I would like to know what the plan plans are for opening summer camp. I've sent emails and left various messages, uh, and I have not heard back. Most other camps in Bucks County are opening on June 22nd or July 6th, but no word from our camp yet. Uh, I think it's very unprofessional for Parks and Recs not to let parents know what is going on. And the longer you wait, the harder it is or will be for us to find alternate camps because they are they will be filled by then. I have paid in full since February and really want to know what the plans are as soon as possible." So Matt would Matt would be addressing this particular issue in in the manager's report. That's the only thing.
That's it, Mr. Gatto?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and the Parks and Rec Director will be addressing that shortly. Um, okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, um, which is item number one on tonight's agenda. The consent agenda consists of item 1A, Approval of the Minutes of the May 7th, 2020 Public Meeting, which was also held via teleconference. Approval of item 1B, Accounts Payable, June 10th, 2020. Item 1C, Approval of Certain Reoccurring Monthly Bills, June 10th, 2020. And item 1D, Approval of Resolution 2020-21 Authorizing the Proper Officers of the Township to Execute Necessary Plans and Documents for the Subdivision of Tax Map Parcel Number 21-035-015-1. There are a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Cummings. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that. That's happening.
Motion's been seconded by Ms. Kaplan. We'll take a roll call vote on uh on that motion. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. Um, that motion passes, uh, is approved with a vote of five zero. Item number two um is Public Hearing Regarding Act 537 Plan for Sewage Facilities Plan Update and Consider Adoption of Resolution 2020-20 Adoption of the Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan Update for the Nishamani Interceptor Service Area. The board received a a detailed briefing of what this plan is from um an engineer from CKS Engineers. Mr. Gatto, would you like to have either the engineer or or Mr. Dylan, whoever would like to give a brief summary of what item number two is?
Okay, Mr. Uh, Joe Nolan's with CKS.
Now, I think Mr. Nolan should agree with that.
Thank you.
You want me to take this, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name's Joe Nolan. I'm with CKS Engineers, and I am the Township Sewer Engineer. Um, we prepared a plan, uh, an Act 537 Plan, which is the sewage facilities plan required by Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection in conjunction with um Nishamani Interceptor Service Area within the town. Um, Lower Southampton is one of 16 municipalities that discharges into the interceptor. And DEP has required Bucks County Water Authority to initiate planning to abate hydraulic overloads in that uh particular interceptor and also in the total road system. The plan update that we provided provides the planning necessary in new sewage facilities to serve the course in Lower Southampton Township and Nishamani Interceptor Service Area. The alternative selected by the plan is to continue with existing sanitary sewer collection sewers, conveyance and treatment for the areas requiring closed sewers and to continue to implement the township infiltration and inflow program. Um, it's important that we continue to try to implement infiltration inflow reduction, which is extraneous flows that enter the sewer system during weather, heavy rains, etc. In addition, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority will uh upgrade the Nishamani Interceptor uh by addressing the inadequacies by uh strip lining portion of the interceptor and also constructing additional portion to provide more hydraulic capacity. Uh, the proposed Act 537 Plan updated uh was available for public inspection when it was advertised for 30 day period as required by state law. Township received no comment on the plan during the advertisement period. I did provide a detailed uh briefing to the board in the work section. Um, and I am recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt this plan update and pass the resolution. From that point, we will submit the plan to DEP uh for their approval. And um from that point, we can proceed with the work required. Be happy to answer any further questions.
Well, if there are no questions, then the motion would be to adopt the resolution.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second. I'll second. Ed Shannon? Can't hear you, Ray.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, um, Mr. I'm sorry. Mr. Cutsaratus has made a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-20, um, which is adoption of the Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan Update for the Nishamani Interceptor Service Area. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Shannon. Uh, we'll go down the line, roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and this is Ray Weldy. I vote yes. So Resolution 2020-20 uh passes with a vote of five zero. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board's
Good seeing you, Joe.
Thank you.
Is that all you need me for, Mr. Gatto?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks. I'll follow up with you. Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on to the manager's report, is the chief in this? Chief Kremel?
I don't see him highlighted on here.
I'm here.
Okay. If 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 the chief is here and can speak, um, um, I'd like to chief, Ms. Kaplan and I attended a a briefing today at the Police Department, but I think it would be better uh if the chief explained exactly what a significant ceremony, what a significant briefing it was, and um what the department went through to get to where they're at. So chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, um, for the past two years, we have been working towards uh being accredited by the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. Uh, basically, what that means is that our policies, procedures, and uh general standard operating procedures are consistent with best practices in Pennsylvania, United States. Um, basically, we rewrote our entire duty manual uh from start to finish. Spent about the past two months going back and forth with a assessor committee from the commission. Uh, today, they came to headquarters, inspected the building, conducted interviews with members of the police department, including myself. And at the end of the day, they're recommending that uh Lower Southampton Police be accredited through the state's uh law enforcement accreditation commission. Uh, in the state of Pennsylvania right now, only less than 10% of police departments are accredited. Uh, we'll be the 121st department in the state accredited. Uh, in Bucks County, there's only 11 right now out of uh 39 police agencies will be number 12. So we should have our official uh accreditation at the next meeting of that uh commission to formally announce that we're accredited. Uh, very happy it happened today. Um, Sergeant Matt Bowman's our accreditation manager did a heck of a job getting it together. And uh it's good for us. It's good for the township. I think it's good for our liability reasons. It's good for insurance. Um, it's good for the residents because they know when the police come, we're operating under best practices for law enforcement.
Thanks, chief. And and I have to say that the uh the assessors that that were there commented uh what how squared away Lower Southampton Police Department is. Um, how easy it was for them to perform their inspection, how well prepared they were. Um, you know, under the guidance of Sergeant Bowman, Officer Tracy and the chief. And um what a pleasure it was to come here and uh and do an assessment on site and really how 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 easy it made them made it for them to recommend accreditation. And like this, like the chief said, only 121 out of 1,117 agencies in Pennsylvania will have achieved that status. So congratulations. It's we're really proud.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I would like to add to that, that um when they were speaking, the commission was speaking, not only did they say recommend, they said strongly recommend. And they were they did nothing but praise our police department and our chief and and all the officers that were involved in this accreditation. So kudos to you and your team, chief. And it was a pleasure hearing such wonderful reviews from the commission. And thank you for the invitation to be there, and congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Joe. Just just a brief aside.
No problem. All right, um, okay, so we're under the manager's report. First up will be Matt, Director Matt Gilbert. Matt?
Yep, I'm here. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair and rest of the board. Um, I do want to start off tonight and and apologize to everyone who I've missed their call. I haven't been able to return their email. I've uh I've not been ignoring anyone. I've just been inundated with calls and emails and Facebook posts. So if I didn't get back to you, uh, I apologize. And and that takes me to uh Ms. Nicoletti's uh public comment. Uh, that includes her as well. Um, I do want to make one comment on the uh public comment from Ms. Nicoletti. The uh she referred to the other summer camps that are going to be operational and have been announcing uh the timeline of that. So uh a majority of those camps that I've seen are uh private camps. They're much smaller camps. They run on a much shorter hours, uh, and they're also not subject to public scrutiny. Uh, so just just for the record, that's uh a major difference between the uh Parks and Recreation Departments in in Lower Bucks County and the private camps who uh some have chose to operate within the guidelines, some are pushing the envelope. But again, that's a matter of opinion. Um, just wanted to acknowledge uh that public comment email. Unfortunately, at this time, Mr. Chair, it would be my recommendation to cancel the Summer Camp 2020 program. Uh, it's uh simply not feasible to operate the camp safely. Uh, our attendance is much higher than what would be considered a safe public gathering, even under the green phase. Uh, with that being said, we don't know when we're going to go to the green phase, and the amount of planning and training that I have to implement to facilitate a safe, fun, structured summer camp uh could possibly get started and then be stopped. It's it's not something that I take lightly. I know there's a group of folks out there who rely on us in more of a means of childcare than recreation. Uh, and it is something I would never take safety out of the equation to facilitate that need. Uh, second to that would be the budget. Uh, the expenses related to operating our summer camp are already uh quite costly. Within the guidelines to uh have all the proper sanitization and signage and additional staff members, uh, they're all expenses that are unbudgeted and uh could leave us in a in a really bad financial situation come the end of summer. So uh at this time, it it is my unfortunate recommendation to uh cancel the 2020 Summer Camp Program, but with hopes that we can put together a smaller program with shorter hours. Uh, sometime, we're we're shooting for that mid-July mark, possibly that July 13th or July 20th. That would still give us a six or a seven week program leading out through August. But we're we're still looking into the feasibility of that. With my recommendation, Mr. Chair, it would also be that all registered uh would receive a full refund. Um, and and it's 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 gonna be a little bit of a timely process. We've never had to going to be a little bit of a timely process. We've never had to undergo this many refunds. We have almost four months of collected fees and registration payments that it's going to be timely to refund all the, all of the money that we've taken in, but it will happen in a full refund.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Matt, if, to give a timeline for the refund, I know you want everybody to be patient. Can you give us some kind of timeline that they could expect the refund? I know there's a lot to be considered in doing that.
There's, there's quite a few variables with that. Starting tonight was first, the board's approval. Now that we've gotten that, or I'm anticipating that I'll receive that tonight, it's, it's hard to nail down an exact date and timeline, but I think it could be feasibly done in the next three to five weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, can you also mention to the public how the refunds will be issued? If someone paid by check, it'll come back as a check? The method it would be?
As if you've paid by check or by cash, you would be refunded by check. If you paid by card, it will go back onto the card that you submitted payment with.
Any other board member question? If not, then I-
So the motion we're looking. Go ahead, Ray.
If not, then I would make a motion to accept the Park and Recreation Director's recommendation to cancel Summer Camp for the 2020 season and issue a full refund of monies to everyone that's paid for their camper's registration.
Deb Kaplan, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
On mute, Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, yes. So unfortunately and sadly, with the vote of five zero, we approve that motion.
Thanks, Matt. All right. The next is deal, what I wanted to mention, if, if we could go to the, back to the manager's report, is dealing with the yard waste collection. Due to the, you know, the, the issues dealing in Philadelphia, now, you know, the various storms that we had in the area over the last couple of weeks. So you got, Mascarot and Son got a little bit behind, let's sort of speak. So the volume of yard waste has kind of grown due to the fact of the storms. They're basically, they're saying that delays, delays, let's say it this way, caused delays in scheduled yard waste collections, but they're hoping to be fully resolved by this Sunday, June 14th. They're going to work through the whole weekend to get the yard waste collections back on schedule. They're asking and advising residents to leave their yard waste containers out this week until they're collected, even if it's not their scheduled day. So you may see the trucks out this weekend, and hopefully you do, because they're supposed to be there. And they're saying, hopefully that'll be resolved by Sunday, June 14th. So I just wanted to bring that issue up. All right. As far as sanitation rebates, 844 were issued so far in 2020. That translates into $42,200 in rebates given back to our residents. Again, the sanitation rebates were extended to June 19th. So please make sure if you're, if you do the rebate, to come back in, whether the township building, or do at least contact Denise on the phone. Next item is the Red Cross Blood Drive. We're going to have it in the township complex, but actually in the former district court building. And that is scheduled for June 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Next item is the US Census 2020. Again, from May 27th through August 14th, you may see census takers stopping by various people's homes if they haven't responded. Right now, the township's rate or response rate is, has gone up from 74.6 to 75.2. The easiest thing to do is you could, if you have access to the internet, just fill it out on the internet. That's the easiest way to do it. The other item for tonight that we would need is dealing with the zoning services. We need an approval for the third-party zoning services, Barry, Isit, and Associates. And we would also need an approval for the township manager to contract for these services. Basically, they would be providing us with a certified BCO and a CZO.
And this is the third-party zoning outfit that will take over upon Mr. Bartlett's departure?
Yes, yes. They would be providing or guidance dealing with the direct PA UCC and zoning service.
And that would start on Monday, June 15th?
It could start on June, yeah, it could start on Monday. And they're, they're currently in, in Bucks County. They do Newtown, New Britain, and Yardley. The gentleman that would be assigned to us has a college degree, a four-year college degree. He's actually on the Board of Directors with the Pennsylvania Association of Code Officials, CACO, and he is the vice chairman for the Ward Planning Commission. And also, this organization was accorded the Entitlement Award for Responsible Corporate Conduct by the Forum for Ethics in the Workplace. So they come highly regarded from even various township managers in the Bucks County Consortium.
And, and Joe, could you detail for anyone who may be listening and, and, and the board what the, what the plan is as far as paying the third party? How many hours a week approximately they would be working? And what's the cost comparison compared to what we have in place now prior to Mr. Bartlett leaving?
Okay. What we're projecting right now is about 25 hours a week. What you, you would have is 20 hours of, of individual FaceTime where the individual would be assigned to the township building, let's say from 9:00 to 2:00 for days a week. If we need, if you don't have anything on the Planning Commission or Zoning Hearing Board, those five hours in a given, in a given week could be used, let's say, for that Friday. As far as expenditures, if everything stays in that 25-hour a week range, we should project out anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000 in annualized savings.
Okay. And this is on an interim basis and can be discontinued at any time?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. I don't know if the board has any other questions.
A minimum on that contract, Joe?
I'm sorry, say again, Ed?
Is there a minimum on the contract?
When you say minimum, what do you mean, Ed?
Time frame.
Like, I think it's, 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 it's a service contract, like any traditional service contract. They could be here for interim, be three months. They could be here six months. They could be here five years. It, it all depends on the level of service they provide the residents and the, and the savings and the effectuated savings that we're able to attain.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
Joe, would there ever be an instance where if Michael wasn't available for a week, that there'd be somebody else that would step in?
They had, they basically had a staff of like 24 individuals, all certified. So there's a whole selection of individuals that could, that could help out if, if you were disposed of, let's say.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
What do you anticipate as far as the gentleman, Michael Artalia, will be up to speed for what we would need him to be able to do?
What, what was your question, Deb? I'm sorry.
For Mr. Artalia, will he be for any outstanding issue that might be, that needed attention right away? Is he going to meet, need to see?
Well, the, the answer to that is, the answer to that is, as a, as there's a request submitted or an issue raised, you deal with it at the time. Quite often, the zoning person contacts a solicitor and there's discussions. And if necessary, we would reach out to Mr. Bartlett if, if background's needed. So as the issues arise, they can be dealt with. That, that shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
So the handoff should be fairly natural.
Okay.
I don't hear anything. If, if there aren't any further questions, we would need a motion then, or someone to make a motion to accept the proposal from Barry Isit and Associates to be the township's third-party zoning officer effective June 15th, 2020.
And authorize the manager.
Go ahead.
I can make that motion, Ray, if you want. Ed Shannon?
Mr. Shannon's made the motion. Is there a second? Somebody said, who was it? Ms. Cummings?
That's Susan Cummings.
Okay, Ms. Cummings seconded the motion. Roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And this is Ray Weldy, yes. So the motion to accept Isit Associates' proposal passes with a vote of five zero. And Mr. Gallo, the other conflict attorney for the, the zoning appeal, does that have to come up too?
Yes, I'll let Frank, I'll let Frank handle that one.
Okay.
Yes, there's been an appeal made by Provo of the zoning hearing board decision relating to the proposed Wawa Bristol, on Bristol Road. So I'm recommending that Nate, Nate Fox be retained as conflict counsel to handle this matter.
Okay.
Which would allow me to, which would allow me to sign his letter of representation.
Okay. And Mr. Fox will represent the township in this matter. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Fox has provided a rate of $80 an hour for this appeal. Is that correct?
No, it was 320.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The $80 is for the engineering firm.
Engineering firm, gone backwards. Okay. So there's a motion made to appoint Nate Fox as the conflict attorney for Provo Pine Goods' appeal of the zoning hearing board decision. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll make, Ed Shannon.
Mr. Shannon's made the motion. A second?
I'll second that, Deb Kaplan.
Ms. Kaplan seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, yes. So the motion to, with the conflict attorney passes with a vote of five zero. Thank you.
That's all for today.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda would be supervisors' comments. Ms. Cummings, would you like to start?
Sure. Well, it was nice hearing the chief talk about the accreditation. So I wanted to congratulate the Lower Southampton Police Department and the chief for, for that accreditation here in Lower Southampton. What a wonderful job that they've done. And also, I want to thank the library board for putting up the guidelines for establishing the steps of reopening through the yellow and the green. And I wanted to encourage, our recreation director spoke about this, and like to encourage all of our residents to come out on Sunday morning from 10:00 to 1:00 over at Play Wiki Park and purchase some of the items from the Love Grows and partake in some of the things that they're growing over there and go over and chat with them and, you know, see what, see what they're all about. As we, as, you know, summer's upon us and as we transition from yellow and brightly to green, we still have to remember, you know, our social distancing, wearing our masks in public. You know, we're needed, still washing our hands. So we still need to all be aware of that in public. We've done a great job and we, you know, need to keep that up. And, you know, again, we always continue to thank our first responders, our healthcare workers for getting us through these most difficult times. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cummings. Mr. Shannon, you want to go?
Yes. I want to congratulate the chief also. He's done a nice job, beautiful job on our police department. And congratulations to the awards that he's received today. I'd like to say also about Matt, the analysis that he's done and the hard work he's gone through to do the best he can to get for the programs and for the Dolphin Swim Club. And hopefully we can get the Dolphin going halfway through the season or whatever. The next meeting, I hope, we're going to be locked and draw for this stupid thing because I hate it. I mean, I don't want to have a comment about it. If, if, other than that, it's nuts. We have, not going to have the parade, I think we announced that last time. And Joe, with the zoning, that's, that's great that we turned around that quick with Jeff's leaving. And that, that should work out really well for us. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Ed. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah. You know, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the tragic death of Mr. George Floyd and what followed afterward. You know, we all watched everything on TV and it was just unbelievable. But I would like to believe that 99% of our country knows that his death was wrong and it should never have. And I'll be the first one to say that black lives absolutely matter. It's our, it's our constitutional right to protest and speak up matters and concerns. And I'll always feel that way. But what I don't understand, and I'll never understand, is all the looting, the rioting, the burning of buildings. And another thing I think I just can't understand is how some can lump all police officers in the same category as the four officers that are tied to Mr. Floyd's death. I want to personally advocate, not just for our police department, but for every police department in this country. These are the men and women who put their lives on the line every day to keep us all safe. And to see the disrespect from some is just horrifying. Police officers do not deserve that. Chief Kremel, please, I'd like you to give my utmost gratitude and respect to every officer you come in contact with, such as what I've been doing with officers I come in contact with. I myself just couldn't imagine our township, our country without a, without any type of law and order. And I just wanted to get that off my chest tonight. That's it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kim. Ms. Kaplan?
Um, yes. To speak further about our library that Ms. Cummings spoke about, like she said, there's a four-step plan that our library director, Mr. Stantz, put together for the reopening of our library, following the CDC, the Office of Commonwealth Libraries and the Bucks County Library Guidelines. You can visit the library's website at LowerSouthHamptonTownshipLibrary.org and the Feasterville Library Facebook page. And on our Township.org page, you can click onto library to see all that information. And just to give a little information on that, there's a step two, which is June 15th, the library will begin the curbside pickup. And step three, July 13th is the target date. The building will open with limited public access and restrictions. Again, please go to the webpages to see more information on that. And also, let's see, and the library did want to thank the residents' patience and support during these uncharted times. There's also continued online activity for adults and children. So please visit the, again, the webpages to continue being involved in those different activities. Continued condolences to those who died of COVID-19 and complications due to COVID-19. Continued appreciation to all our first responders, frontline workers, medical personnel, essential workers, and all the volunteers, and to our township team for their continued dedication during this time. And of course, also to the police department for not only upping the patrolling for our community, but also assisting our neighboring patrolling and their police officers and the department for everything that they're doing to keep the community safe during the unrest the whole country has been experiencing. So thank you for the police department and the integrity and the responsibility and the honor in which they serve. And congratulations again for the accreditation. It's a gold standard. And I'm not surprised that we received it. I know we have an outstanding police department. And again, I know we have an outstanding police department, and again, congratulations. That's all I have.
Thank you, Deb. And following up on all that and trying not to be redundant, I walked into that police station for the first time 41 years ago from last Thursday, for my first day on the job. And compared then, comparing then to now, that station, although it's on the same foundation, isn't the same building. The chief and his officers have taken that station and turned it into a top-notch, first-rate police facility, policy-wise, procedure-wise, and turned it into one of the envy of the other departments in Bucks County, and they should be very proud of what they've done. And those officers, like Ms. Kaplan said, responded to Trenton, responded to Philadelphia, responded to Morrisville, helped guard the bridges that go between Morrisville and Trenton with the MUR team during the civil unrest that's taken place the last two weeks. And thank God we have them, because when you call 911, they're the only ones that are coming out. And if someone's trying to get into your house, or there's a horrific car crash, there's a medical emergency, when 911 calls, we're damn glad that they're coming out. So thank you very much for all that you do. Enough said about that. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out and voting on June 2nd in the Pennsylvania primary, and also for everyone that's contributed to the Food Drive. The Food Drive organized by our fire marshal at the old District Court Building next to the township building has been a tremendous success and has helped restock the food banks at St. Stephen's Church and also at Assumption Church. So thank you to all the residents that continue to donate to the Food Drive, and that's all I have. I'd like to thank everyone for participating and weighing in tonight. And our last matter of business, I should say, would be a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Deb Kaplan.
Ms. Kaplan's made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that, Susan Cummings.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings. We'll go down, do a roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for participating and listening tonight, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Bye.